Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, January 7th, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
She is excused.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Fares?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce Girl Scout troop number 10137 and 10001. They will be presenting the colors. Would you please rise? Counselor, would you please stand to the side?
Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post your colors. Color guard, honor your flag. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard dismissed. Please remain standing for the National Anthem.
Please be seated. I would now like to introduce Pastor Jose Dominguez from La Luz Sevillier Church to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for our new officials that will be coming in. And we ask you, God, that you would bless, that you would bless our mayor, that you would bless them with wisdom and would bless them with knowledge and understanding, Lord, as they make decisions, that you would guide them and lead them and instruct them in the year 2019. That as they make those choices and they make those decisions, that they would look at the common good of the city and its people. And so, Lord, right now, we pray that you would bring harmony and unity, Lord, as they work together for the good of our city. And so, Father, we just pray right now, in the powerful name of Jesus, that your favor and your grace would just be upon not only our officials, our leadership, but over our city, Lord, that you would prosper and bless our city. And so, we ask this, in the powerful name of Jesus Christ, we pray.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you all for joining us tonight as we launch this next biennium. We're going to be able to say thank you to people who have been serving and welcome the new members of our city council. Before we get into the recognition of our outgoing counselors, I would like to take a moment and recognize some dignitaries who are in the room. I want to thank Mayor Jim Tret of the City of Detroit for joining us tonight. Fire Board Member Betty Hart. Transit Board Member Colleen Bush. Former Kaiser Mayor Dennis Koho. And former City Counselor Gary Whalen. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Oh, Phil Bay. Sorry, and one more, Phil Bay. Former City Counselor Phil Bay is also here. Thank you. So what I would like to do is take a moment now to recognize our outgoing council members. This is a team activity. This is not one of us deciding we're going to serve the city. It's each of us deciding we're going to serve on a team to serve our community. And it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to work with this team over this last biennium. So as two of our council members complete their term of service, I would like to take a moment and thank them and their families. Because service, as we can see from all of you here tonight, is a family affair. Our time might be spent up here, but we're taking time from family, friends, work, and so forth, to give time to our city. And it's our way of saying we're going to be part of the community and give. So first, I would like to acknowledge and recognize outgoing Counselor Amy Ryan. Be it known and declared to all present that Amy Ryan has served the people in the City of Kaiser in the office of City Counselor from January 5th, 2015, to January 7th, 2019, and faithfully discharged the duties for which she was duly sworn. During Counselor Ryan's term of office, her service included the Public Arts Commission, public outreach for the Kaiser Parks Fee, Kaiser Budget Committee, Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Kaiser United Council Liaison. Now I therefore, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, with concurrence of the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, and with the people of the City of Kaiser, express our sincere thanks and appreciation to Counselor Amy Ryan for her dedicated service. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser the 7th day of January 2019. Counselor Ryan.
This is beautiful. Thank you. It has been my honor and privilege to serve not only the city on behalf of multiple committees, but also in surrounding areas, I'm represent Kaiser, but to serve the citizens and to be their voice and to learn, to learn what people wanted and needed in Kaiser. And that drove me to run. And it has been a privilege to continue to work with all the citizens. And I consider it an honor. I also look forward to continuing to serve on different levels. And I appreciate all of you and your support very much. Thank you.
And in position six, Counselor Bruce Anderson. Be it known and declared to all present that Bruce Anderson has served the people in the City of Kaiser in the office of City Counselor from April 18th, 2016, to January 7th, 2019, and has faithfully discharged the duties for which he was duly sworn. During Counselor Anderson's terms of office, his service included the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Council Liaison, Kaiser Audit Committee, Clogger Creek Watershed Council, Kaiser Stormwater Advisory, Salem Water Waste Water Task Force, and the Kaiser Budget Committee. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, with concurrence of the City Council assembled in regular session, and with the people of the City of Kaiser, express our sincere thanks and appreciation to Counselor Bruce Anderson for his dedicated service. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser the 7th day of January 2019. Counselor Anderson. Want to say a few words to your family and folks here? Yes, please. That's what we call de tant, the duck and the beaver, working together.
Tell them the history. We did it on the first day.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Coming and going. Counselor Herrera, thank you so much. It's been my absolute honor and privilege to serve this awesome community. My wife and I have called Kaiser home for nearly 29 years that we've lived here. I've enjoyed serving the community in previous lives, the Kaiser Planning Commission. But this is a wonderful place to live, and it's been a real honor to be able to serve with all of you on this august panel. We've got an awesome group of citizens that live here that make it special. And we've got, and you know, I said this in our last meeting, not knowing that I'd have one more shot at this, but I do have to just give out lots of praise to all of our city staff, notably our department directors that are up here. We're very, very fortunate and blessed, in my opinion, to be served by these amazing folks. And I just really appreciate it. They make everything happen. But more to the point, the folks that volunteer and make things happen in our parks, in our various committees, our task forces and all of that. I've just been fortunate to be sitting up here and serving as counsel, helping to guide this awesome community along. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to do so. And it's a real privilege to serve with you all. And thank you so much, so very much for this honor. Madam Mayor, thank you so much. And I wish you the best.
Thank you. We have one more tradition. When a counselor leaves office, they get to select a park at which a tree will be planted and a plaque placed. And I believe you've both let our city staff know what park you'd like your tree in. If not, make sure you let them know before the planting season. And it's a way of showing that the time that we invest continues to give back and grow over the time going forward. We can look back and say, yes, we made a difference, and we will keep on making a difference. So thank you so much. I have one more presentation. Over the last two years, Counselor Marlene Parsons has been serving as the council president. And I can't begin to tell you how much it means to have someone you can really rely on, who can call you out when you need help, keep you on track when you're tired, just keep things going. And it's an important and very valuable team effort, and I really appreciated her hard work. Be it known and declared to all present that Marlene Parsons has served the people in the City of Kaiser in the office of City Council President from January 2nd, 2017, to January 7th, 2019, and faithfully discharged the duties for which the city council did elect her, which include providing support and backup to the mayor, assuming the duties for council president Dennis Koho in 2016 during his recovery, conducting monthly commissioner breakfasts, representing the city council as requested by the mayor, and providing support for her fellow city counselors. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, with concurrence of the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, and with the people of the City of Kaiser, express our sincere thanks and appreciation to Council President Marlene Parsons for her dedicated service. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser the 7th day of January 2019. Counselor Parsons.
Did you do it?
Yep. And I have one small gift for you. This is a stained glass of an iris that I thought might brighten up your home.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Counselor Parsons. And now the wonderful talented musical group from McNary High School will... What is the name of the piece that they're playing? I don't remember. I didn't write down. Pardon? Farewell. Will be playing a piece for us while we do some rearranging up here and get ready to administer the oath of office. Thank you. You're wonderful. Before you take your seats, would you come up to the microphone and introduce yourselves and tell us what year you are in high school, please? And thank you so much. Let's give them one more round of applause. Beautifully done.
My name is Maya Lescom. I am a junior at McNary High School.
My name is Josephine Lim, and I'm a senior at McNary High School.
My name's Elizabeth Burleson, and I'm a senior.
I'm Sarah Arnsmire, and I'm a senior.
And now we will begin administering the oath of office. We will begin with position number four, Counselor Roland Herrera. Yes, I did. Yeah. There you go. Stand close to my... There we go.
We're ready, I think. Any other grandkids?
Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Roland Herrera.
I, Roland Herrera.
Being first duly sworn.
Really first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of counselor.
The duties of counselor.
For the City of Kaiser.
For the City of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
For the term of my office.
For the term of my office.
Congratulations.
There we go. He's got to kiss the baby. And now I'd like to introduce in position number five, Counsel Elizabeth Smith. Come on down.
Oh, they switched.
Yep.
Everybody's switched.
This is called flexibility.
Do it again. Do it again. It's a job, Mary.
Totally its fault.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth Smith.
I, Elizabeth Smith.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution of the state of Oregon.
Laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of counselor.
The duties of counselor.
For the City of Kaiser.
For the City of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The term of my office.
For the term of my office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Counselor Herrera, would you like to introduce those charming young people that were with you and other family members who are here to support you tonight?
We have my wife and my daughter, Olivia and Rebecca, Brittany. My son Bingo, I think he's already gone.
There he goes.
There he is.
There he goes. And my grandson Isaiah, and the little young lady was Eva. And my other two grandsons are dancers, Little Manuel and Ryu.
Counselor Smith, welcome. Would you like to introduce family and friends who are here with you tonight?
Yeah, I have my husband Todd Smith in the back, along with Erica Nixon and Samantha Nixon, my two daughters. I've got friends Donna, Dammy, Paul Kittelson, Jean and Melissa Martin, and Sherry, who came in clear from East Salem. So thank you guys all for being here.
And in position number six, Dan Kohler.
Yeah.
Come on down.
It's not working. The mic is not working.
Eat the mic.
I'm following directions.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Daniel R. Kohler.
I, Daniel R. Kohler.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and the laws.
Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of counselor.
The duties of counselor.
For the City of Kaiser.
The City of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
For the term of my office.
For the term of my office.
Congratulations.
Got a nameplate and everything, so you know where to sit. Counselor Kohler, would you like to introduce friends and family who are here to support you?
Do we have that much time? I feel very privileged to be able to introduce a lot of the folks that are here on my behalf. I appreciate them. First, my good wife Lisa. Without her support and help, none of this would be possible. I have four children here tonight. Grant, Josh, Emily, and Christian. Excuse me, Bonnie and Christian. I have four grandchildren here. I've got Matt Lawyer and his family. I have some dear friends that came from Vancouver to be here tonight, Lori and Larry Hanson. And I've got Alan and Sue Nguyen that came from... Where do you guys live, anyway? They live in Salem. And they worked with me for quite a few years on the LDS Relations Committee. I appreciate that. I have a good friend Todd Hatfield Clear in the back, and he came down from Lyons tonight. Today's his birthday. Thank you, Todd. And I've got Dennis Koho that came tonight. I have a young fellow that was one of the first city counselors here. And it's great to have him here. And just a lot of other people. And so, it's just been really great, all the support and help and love that you all have shown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I will take the oath of office for the office of mayor. Now, I will take the oath of office for the office of mayor.
One standing side. Keep one guy in each side.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Kathy Clark.
I, Kathy Clark.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Upon oath say.
Upon oath say.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
For the city of Kaiser.
For the city of Kaiser.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The term of my office.
For the term of my office.
Congratulations.
So, here with me tonight are a couple of the people who have made this possible without the support and love and taking care of family things when I couldn't be there, and my husband, Kevin Clark. I couldn't do without you. So, thank you. Also here tonight is my youngest daughter, Elena, watching on TV or via Kaiser TV. My daughter, Emmeline, and her husband, Jordan. My son, Alex, and his lovely wife, Sheila. And my daughter, Allison, and her husband, Michael. Thank you all. And I also want to say, hi, Mom, because I know she couldn't be here tonight. She wasn't feeling well, but she wanted to be here. And she lives here in Kaiser as well. Volunteering is a family affair, for sure. And we have our families, and then we have our big community family. And so, I thank you all for the support that you give all of us, because together, this is what makes Kaiser the amazing community is. Thank you all for being here tonight and part of this celebration. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the election of the 2019-2020 City Council President. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to nominate Counselor Kim Freeman.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Counselor Kim Freeman becoming the City Council President signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counselor Kim Freeman will serve this next two years as our City Council President. All right, let's go on then to committee reports. Item five, the 2016-19 Committee Review and the Appointments for the City Committees, Boards, and Commissions. This was included in the packet, so I will read these into the record. On the Buildable Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis Project, Counselor Reed. Kaiser Public Arts Commission, Counselor Smith. Kaiser Audit Committee, Counselors Freeman, Parsons, and Smith. The Budget Committee, all y'all. We all get to do that one. Kaiser Festival Advisory Board, Counselors Smith and Reed. Kaiser Little League Park Long Range Planning Task Force, that title is my fault. Mayor Clark, Counselors Parsons. And then, we will make a change to Counselor Kohler's status from citizen member to council member at our next meeting. Kaiser Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Counselor Herrera. Kaiser Personnel Policy Committee, Mayor Clark, Counselors Freeman and Reed. Kaiser Planning Commission, Counselor Freeman. Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, Counselor Herrera. Long Range Planning Task Force, again, all y'all. On the Municipal Judge Evaluation for 2019, it'll be Counselors Kohler and Parsons, and for 2020, Mayor Clark and Counselor Smith. Stormwater Advisory Committee will be Counselors Reed, Kohler, and Parsons. Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee will be Counselor Kohler. Volunteer Coordinating Committee, Counselor Parsons. And then, the Neighborhood Association Liaisons, West Kaiser, Counselor Freeman, Greater Gubser, Counselor Herrera, Southeast Kaiser, Counselor Reed. So, and all of you have a copy of that. And this is the additional duties as assigned. We have these meetings, but then we also have all of these assignments as well, to keep things going. Next up, we have a resolution dissolving the Kaiser Economic Development Commission, repealing R. 2014-2421. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney.
I believe in Tracy's staff report, there was an indication that the committee met in April and recommended that the Kaiser Chamber take over those duties, and they have not met since that time. The indication that they wanted the council to dissolve the committee. So, we've prepared a resolution for your consideration, and that resolution is before you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 dissolving the Kaiser Economic Development Commission, repealing Resolution R. 2014-2421.
Second.
It's been moved in a second that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution dissolving the Kaiser Economic Development Commission, repealing R. 2014-2421. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. All right, on to item B, which is the Outside Committees, Boards, and Commission Appointments. So, you think that was a list. Here's the next one. Outside Committee Appointments. Clogger Creek Watershed Council, Counselor Kohler. Career Technical Education Advisory Committee, Mayor Clark, Counselor Freeman... Uh, sorry, Counselor Herrera. I jumped a line. Sorry about that. Community and Business Leaders Education Task Force, Counselor Parsons. Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Iris Festival Liaison, Counselor Smith. Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors Liaison, Counselor Parsons. Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board of Directors, Mayor Clark. Kaiser United Liaison, Counselor Herrera. Marion County Public Safety and Coordinating Council, Counselor Herrera. Marion County Commissioners Breakfast, Council President, which will be Counselor Freeman plus two on a rotating basis. The Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee, Mayor Clark. Mid Willamette Valley Council of Government Boards and Executive Committee, Mayor Clark. Mid Willamette Valley Commission on Transportation. Once again, Mayor Clark and Counselor Parsons is the alternate. Salem River Crossing Oversight Team, Mayor Clark. The Salem Wastewater Task Force, Counselor Kohler. SEDCOR Board of Directors, which is the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, acronyms, Mayor Clark. And then, the Salem Kaiser Air Transportation Study, SCATS, is also Mayor Clark. And if I missed something, Tracy Davis will let me know. All right. I took care of the Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board Representative. So, we'll go on then to item D, which is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Appointments for 2019-2020. So, I will go down the row and ask you who your appointee is. Counselor Smith.
I've appointed Laura Anson.
Thank you. Counselor Herrera.
I've appointed Robin Wilson.
Thank you. Counselor Parsons.
Yes, Sarah, ahead.
Counselor Kohler.
Mr. Larry Jackson.
Counselor Reed.
Mike Wiltfong.
And Counselor Freeman has indicated that she will reappoint Trish Crenshaw. My appointment will be Daisy Hickman. All right. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee are the group of folks that help interview and place people on our committees and commissions, and they've been a very important part of helping our committee system be so successful. So, I thank you all for your appointments and look forward to the work that they will be doing on our behalf. Before I get in public testimony, I want to ask the council's consensus on an addition. We have a schedule for the Commissioners Breakfast, which is the second Tuesday of every month. Thursday. See, that's why I need her, right? At the same time, and on the same day of the month, is the Latino Business Alliance, and that's been difficult for us to get people there. So, I reached out to Jose Gonzalez of the Latino Business Alliance and asked about counselors attending, and he said enthusiastically, yes. So, what I would like to do, so we can be intentional about attending, is take our schedule for the Commissioners Breakfast, the two counselors assigned one month, ask them to attend the Latino Business Alliance Breakfast the next month. So, that way, we have it scheduled. If you can't make it, we'll work around and get substitutes and so forth. We can do that. But that way, if we don't plan it, we don't do it. So, I will be asking Tracy to go ahead and redo that schedule with an additional column, where we will then be attending the Latino Business Alliance once a month to do outreach and, you know, relationship building. Since we don't have, you know, for January, we're just starting off cold, I would like to attend the first one, and I've asked Counselor Kohler to attend with me for the first one. And then, we'll go into the rotation for this year. Is that my consensus, counsel? Is that something that you would like to have us go ahead and do?
Yes.
Any head nods? All right. So, we will proceed with that plan. Thank you all very much. That concludes the public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearings tonight. Is there anybody signed up for public testimony? Okay. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on matters this evening? Okay, we want the cookies. All right. We have no public hearings or administrative action. We have no items on the consent calendar. Council Liaison Reports, just a few items that some of us may wish to share. So... I will start then with Counselor Herrera.
Just a quick reminder, and by the way, I also want to thank the outgoing council for their dedication for some of the things we accomplished, and I'm really proud of what we did, so, for what it's worth. I want a quick reminder for Kaiser United, next Monday on January 14th, we will be meeting at CTEC, which is the culinary class from CTEC. We'll be preparing our lunch meeting. It's for all the folks that regularly, it's over on Portland Road. And just a reminder, it's at 12:15 till 1:30. And we will be hosting. Chuck will tell us a little bit about... Chuck Lee will tell us a little bit about... We'll do the mini tour. And I like to show off that place, because it's an incredible place. If you haven't been there, let me know. I will take you there. It's great. The other thing I want to remind us about, the First Citizen Dinner on the 19th, I believe that's before our next meeting, is that correct?
Right after.
Okay. And that's a very special event, and looking forward to seeing all our Kaiser... Right?
Yep, you're right. You're right.
And then, I had the pleasure of going down to the bowl game, and I wanted to tell Bruce one last thing about that. It was kind of a boring game, but it was a lot of fun, and go Ducks!
Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go Beavs! We had him in the middle. We had him where we wanted him, and then Bruce had to leave. But I also...
I'm gonna be your fan.
Oh, well, there we go then. Okay. Bring your flags where you're at. I also want to thank Amy and Bruce, too, for your service the last four years and the knowledge that you brought to the city council and the commitment. So, thank you guys again for serving. I just have a few things, too. We have the Marion County Commissioner Breakfast on Thursday morning at Sherry's. We have a work session next Monday night. I have the Volunteer Coordinating Committee on the 17th. I have the Community Business Leaders Education Task Force on the 15th. Oh, and I was just informed by Jonathan that I have a chamber meeting on Wednesday morning. There you go.
And do we need one more person for the Commissioners Breakfast?
No, I have Counselor Smith has volunteered to go.
Okay.
And I will be there.
And Counselor Herrera and myself.
So, this side of the dice will be there on Thursday morning?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kohler, anything tonight?
Are you going to report on the Little League meeting?
I will let you do so.
That's your big chance.
Debut.
We had a Little League Task Force meeting Wednesday, last Wednesday evening. We're missing one member, but we decided all kinds of things, and I think one of the things we decided was to let the two leagues that are playing without right now to come up with a plan to manage the fields, and if they can't come up with one, then we'll come up with one for them.
Okay.
Then, I have a meeting Thursday with BikePed Thursday evening, and then the Latino Business Meeting Thursday morning.
All right. Perfect. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Kaiser Community Band Concert back on December 19th, and that was fantastic. I really appreciate their efforts, and it was just a wonderful concert full of holiday music, and it was just lots of fun. I went to the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association Meeting last Thursday... Thursday, thank you. And we kind of kicked off our year reviewing our bylaws and so forth. And so, again, I would extend an invitation to anybody in the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood to come to our meetings. We need to hear your voice. We need to hear what you have to say. I will be attending the Planning Commission Meeting on Wednesday for Counsel Freeman, and our Stormwater Committee Meeting has been canceled for this month, so... And then, just kind of a note that plans for the bond construction at McNary High School and other schools around McNary are starting to unfold, and it's a little scary. It's going to be very chaotic for about 15 months, at least at McNary. I'm not sure what the schedule is for some of the other Kaiser schools, but excited about that, and thank you all for passing the bond measure in behalf of the school district and, well, the Kaiser schools is my perspective. But anyway, we're excited to see how that works out, and we all need to be patient for 15 months.
So, just a quick question on that, and this might be more appropriate for the City Manager, to have a link on our webpage for construction news and updates, so the people in Kaiser will know what's getting closed, where people might have congestion and so forth during the construction process?
If the school's providing said updates, we'd be happy to link to them, but if they're not, we're not going to create them for them.
Right, right.
Okay.
But if we could be a link to help get the word out, so we don't... So, we can have a little bit less surprise in the morning, where we go, dang, I didn't know that was closed today. Or open. All right. Thank you very much. Youth Counselor Ferris.
Hi. Well, on the McNary and CTEC side, next Monday, juniors and seniors are encouraged to attend Scholarship Information Night. For mentors, volunteers for mentoring are still needed for the McNary Mentor Program. We're... So, we're still looking for community members to help with that. Training is January 10th, 11:15 to 12:45. If you want more information about that, please feel free to email or call McNary College and Career Center, or sign up with the Mentor tab on the online website. McNary's musical, Grease, is coming January 10th, 11th, 12th, 17th, 18th, and 19th. There are also matinees on the 12th and 19th at 2:00. Everything else is at 7:00 PM. It's $8 for students and seniors, $10 for everybody else. It's a great opportunity, absolutely amazing cast. Please come. Feel free to also check the McNary website for ticket information. CTEC showcases were last month, and they were a blast. They took place over the 3rd, 10th, and 17th, and that showed all 10 programs, including the next launching programs, which were culinary and agri-science. So, today, the Game Design and Animation Program also visited Silver Creek Lanes to view the graphics and designs that they use in their interactive bowling lanes, and they're wanting to collaborate with the program to possibly create new content and also help out prospective members of the industry. So, spring sports start soon at McNary. That'll be very fun. And I'd also like to welcome new and returning council members. I look forward to working with you for the new year.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of things to add. I just have a couple of things to add. On the 18th of December, I attended the planning meeting for the annual meeting and dinner for the Council of Governments, and then we had our board meeting. And I will be serving another year as the Chair of the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. On the 19th, we interviewed for the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Program Coordinator. We're going to work on some alternatives and probably go out again for recruitment for that position. On the 2nd, I went down to the Marion County Commission and presented to Commissioner Carlson the photo of the bench we would be placing in her honor with a plaque that includes the quote "she provided," which was "she got things done," which she certainly did. And where else would we put that bench?
The big toy.
The big toy. When Commissioner Cameron got on the commission, he thought pretty much that was all that she did was, because all he heard about was "the big toy." So we will have a bench there in her honor, and thank you her for her service to Marion County and very much involved in the community of Kaiser. Then on the 2nd, we had the Little League Task Force. The next meeting is February 5th. Tomorrow is the Biogas Facility Groundbreaking out at Willow Lake, and I will be attending that with a couple of you, Councillor Herrera, Councillor Smith. You'll be going to that, Councillor Kohler. That's going to be a fabulous facility for turning the biosols into fuel, into energy. It's a great project in collaboration with the City of Salem. And I believe it's, I can't remember which state agency involved in that. Kaiser Heritage Board is tomorrow night. SEDCOR, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, lunch is on Wednesday with legislative updates and getting ready for the session. West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, I'll be filling in for Councillor Freeman Thursday night. And then on the 17th, we have the Statesman Journal and Bridgeway Community Conversation on LGBTQ and Civil Rights. A couple of council reminders for your calendar. We talked about First Citizen, the Council of Governments Dinner on the 20th of February, and the State of the City hosted by the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce will be on March 12th. I was also asked to please thank, and all of you thank, Scott White and Dave Wallery and their elf crew for putting up and then now taking down our holiday lights for the year. They're the ones who helped light up Kaiser for Christmas, along with the folks in Gubser. And I'm looking forward to getting a count on the dollars and food donated through the Gubser Miracle of Christmas, which feeds people year-round. So proud of that community for putting up with all the traffic and making a huge difference for our community. Thank you so much. All right, we have then other business. This time is provided to allow the Mayor, City Council Members or Staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not listed on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim?
Just one thing. This is a reminder from K-23 to make sure to talk into your microphones when you're speaking. If you can't hear yourself being amplified, then you're probably not being amplified, and that means the people on TV definitely cannot hear you. Thank you.
Michelle.
I would just like to share that we do have a municipal utility worker parks position open right now. It closes Wednesday at 5:00 PM. So if you know anyone who might be interested and qualified, please encourage them to apply. Thank you.
Don't break it. There we go. Told you last time, I'll tell you again, we have another new police officer, as of today, Spanish speaker. So along with the new councillors, another member of Kaiser, City of Kaiser. Thank you.
Mr. Lawyer.
Nothing at all. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Brown.
Just one thing, and that is the first meeting of our Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis Citizens Advisory Committee will be meeting on Monday at 6:00 here. So that's the first meeting where we're kicking off that project with our citizens.
Councillor?
Just a reminder, next Monday, we have at 5:45 council training and orientation, so hopefully you all can make that.
Very good. And then, not to get too sappy, but as a student of governance, I always like to mention what just happened here this evening, sort of following on the heels of longtime past City Councillor Jerry McGee, who would always remind us that this evening was an example of a transference of power at the local government level that happened peacefully, without a shot fired, no tanks in the streets, which we laugh about, and the fact that we can laugh about that shows us how amazingly our representative democratic process at the local level works in this country, because that cannot be said for big chunks of this world. So take pride in it. And also, these folks up here, I mean, the department heads and I get paid to be here, they do not. And if you heard all of their committee and external assignments, they put a lot of time and effort into this job for you and for me and for us, and it is a great honor to be part of that. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Written Communication, I don't have anything at this time. Agenda Input, we will meet, as City Attorney mentioned, next week at 5:45 for a City Council orientation. We will meet then on January 22nd, 7:00 PM, which is a Tuesday in regular session, and then February 4th, 7:00 PM in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? The time is 7:56, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.[1793.32]